I'll second it.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you for your input.
Under new business, Councilman Venable, I want to talk about sidewalks and the budgeting workshops.
Mayor, we asked about preparing our sidewalks that are currently out of the city. And I'd ask to have sound evaluated areas and what it's. Pretty much, I don't know if that's so good. Anyone in the council knows where their sidewalks need to be repaired, if they could please let sound in. And I'll direct them on this as well.
I believe you can drive around looking to see where and perhaps send a document.
Okay.
And then on the budget workshop, I had talked about having the council come up with a couple of dates. Initially, I was hoping for the end of February, but we're nearing the end of February pretty quickly. And I don't think that would give departments enough time to put a budget together. So I think each council member has a calendar in front of them. If we could possibly take a date and time to where we could set up our first budget workshop session of the year and have a department head sort of question in there. I think there's, for quite a few of us, maybe Monday or Tuesday afternoon probably would work best.
Well, and you mentioned the council on board.
I know Susan has been trying to keep up with 2020 fiscal year and still putting things together for 2019. And the auditor has asked for a list of about 15 items on top of what we've been given. She had planned on getting some raw numbers together for me by the end of February. Effective March 2nd, the city will have a city accountant who can work closely with Susan. So one of the priorities would be to get some numbers together. I would think the second week of March might be a possibility. And so if we can, I would prefer to have some raw numbers and then, you know, the council has something to work with at that point. So I would say anytime after the 13th, and then we'd have more information to go with and then more input.
Well, the 17th is the council meeting. It just depends on how long it's going to take the new accountant to get her feet and to dig in and find out where she's at, where we're at financially before we start throwing. I mean, we do, we are ahead of the budget.
You know, try the 23rd or the 30th?
Yeah.
She has worked at other municipalities, one near Bushville, and she does have experience even in the private sector. So I don't think that it would take very long.
How much will it be?
I do.
Probably in March. That's plenty of time.
Is there a certain time you can work better from either one after work?
Not all the time.
6:30 works good for me.
Any other input?
How long are we gonna, how long is it gonna last? I'm just asking. We don't know.
Hours.
We don't want to get into the same situation we did last year and then drop down too far. So that's why I'm hoping to have some raw numbers, get some input from department heads.
Yeah, maybe this year we'll get some real raw numbers. That's what I would, I'm looking forward to that.
The council needs to have some more budgeting.
Is that what you guys just said, call meeting?
Call meeting for the 30th or 60th.
I have a question. Who interviewed this new accountant?
I do.
Why don't we have personnel to meet? Can we not go sit in on the interview?
I advertised for two weeks and... I don't, is there anything that...
There is some personnel for me. I don't know, but...
Me and Mike. But we wasn't aware that you were interviewing anybody.
No, I saw me for the city and I responded. I'm sorry.
I mean, I just wondered, I thought it was great. I wonder why personnel would be wouldn't call in and wouldn't wear ties. Your heart's fast.
Well, I have a question. Are you planning to use the council on any of your hiring?
That one in particular, I felt needed to be handled quicker than later. So yes, I would be happy to.
But I think that the crowd has said that we can be in.
That one in particular, the ship sailed, that's on me. So if I just move forward, I'm wanting to ask you.
Mayor, that's all I have for the budget workshop. If everybody is good at 6:30, I will mark 30. It's not gonna work.
No, I'll make it work. I just said it's late. Before you move on, if you don't mind, I just want to thank our police department, you know, for the work that you guys are doing, appreciate it. It's not, nothing that you do is unappreciated.
At this time, we have Chief Underwood for the police department updates.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Well, we've been here about four, I've been with the city for about four weeks. We have made, I think, some forwards, definitely some improvement. One improvement that we have made, we have started working on the cars. We only have one that's striped for the reflector. The second unit will be striped on Friday if the weather permits, which is to be the white part of one that I drive. It'll be a black reflector outline because black and white, it'll show who did that. We're also working on the trucks, so it's getting those restripped and getting those things done. I want to first thank everybody for coming out on the 8th of February for the meet and greet. A lot of people turned, showed up, support that was strong. I appreciate that. Been getting a lot of good complaints, people coming in, stopping by the police department, meeting me, talking to me, giving me some ideas. I still welcome that. We're also working with different things within the department, changes are being made within the department for the department to go forward and that's the first thing. Since then, we've, I've interviewed several people. I have about seven to 12 applicants for positions actually that come in. I had two come in this past week. Out of that, we hired, we did hire one guy, Andrew, would you go on the front, please? He has about 15 years with Department Correction, worked in different divisions within the Department Corrections, K-9, 13, and stuff like that. This is one of the new hires right here. We're glad to have him on board with him and... He's gonna be a great asset to the department, possibly looking at another candidate in the next couple of weeks or so. And saying that, still focusing on the community, some inputs and changes we'd like to see take place in the community. Neighborhood patrolling, if you see cars come through the neighborhood at night and blue lights is on, don't panic, that doesn't make you know we're in there. I know in the past that we had several complaints that we don't see going forward. Well, that's one of the things we are trying to change.
I've seen it in RNA, I was telling you.
Oh, I think it's a little like... So we are trying to do that. Just a few other things, y'all have ideas, I'm open to ideas for the community. I want to make this work and we can do it if we work together. I think, I've mentioned it a couple of times, we have a form, accommodation form and a complaint form. I take, I take that very seriously. My community, this is my community now here, you have something within the department that needs to be addressed, bring it to my attention. I will promise you one thing, I will look into it. I do want what's best for the city. And no one is held above, anyone, we all can be accountable, we're all held accountable for our actions. So please, you can call me, email me, hit the form, drop it off, I'll get back in touch with you on it. So just wanted everybody to know, thank you for your support, continue to ask for your support and the direction that we are going. Thank you all, thank you.
I need to amend the agenda. There were a couple items, apparently I didn't get on there and I thought were on there. I need to put two things on there. I gave everyone a special Olympics. The other thing is a temporary home for the police department. So I guess that would be item four would be the Special Olympics. And item five would be a temporary home for the police department. I got this in the mail and I don't know if we've ever contributed as a city, I just hope we do or have. They'd like a minimum of $75 donation and that would help with the Special Olympics athletes and also provide them with a T-shirt for $100 and then they would, I believe it says, they would also transport them. Travel and hotel accommodations, I believe. So the side parts of it is that we get recognition, but I don't think that that's the reason to do this.
Please do it, please do it.
I would suggest, any suggestions from the council, what they feel would be reasonable for the city to donate towards a very good cause.
Mayor, we need, we really need to motion to amend the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got backed up. I need a motion to amend the agenda first.
I'll make the motion to amend the agenda to accommodate the Special Olympics item and also the temporary movement of the police department.
All those in favor? Okay, fast forward now, recommendations from the council, what they feel would be a reasonable donation for the city to give to the Special Olympics.
Oh, I have a niece that's in the Special Olympics, she does every year, so that's my host, my aunt.
She recommended three.
I recommended three, I'm not up for motion to amend. I second that.
All those in favor for 300 donations to the Special Olympics? So carry.
I think that's right. I've been a volunteer for the Special Olympics for about 30 years and I've seen those people, kids of all ages.
They also have drawing photos.
Yeah, that's what I said, kids of all ages.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, they're kids at heart.
There they are. Some call them angels on earth.
Yes.
My husband was a quadriplegic for 18 years in the Special Olympics and I'm a lot to him.
Okay, next order of business is a temporary home for the police department. I've been trying to work very diligently with the fire marshal. Our fire marshal is still believing in the hospital, is that true, Councilman Vonn?
No, he's, he's gone for a while before he's returned.
So it went from, I think, second down from him, it kind of rinky, went to his assistant and then went to the chief and what they want, it would take about six weeks to get. And that would be engineering drawings with a stamp of approval or seal. So we were approached by the Casto Brothers and offered us a very good price to the, what used to be the doctor's office down here. And it was even a better offer than they did last year. And for that, I think we should be grateful. So we drew up a contract and if the council, I'd like to get a motion that they move to the addresses down the street here from Railroad 1906 C Railroad Street. It's almost directly across from the little monument that signifies the dead center of the city of Statham.
I'll make a motion that we move our police department to purely to 1906 C Railroad Street.
Okay, all those in favor?
That's the old Dr. Stevens office.
Yes.
It's nice office.
It's very nice, they've agreed to do a couple of small modifications for the police department. Very minimal, just the police department has looked at it and they think that it'll work. That gives them literally a good month and they should be out of that building probably a week prior to the library needing to expand. Yes, do you have a...
Would there be a cost saving during that versus...
The renovation for here was, I don't remember the exact figure, but it was about $24,000. And then you have to undo it. That was something that, the two positive sides to that was there would have been a second bathroom put in and also a separate air system for the back to give that control for the evidence room. If, and when they would undo those changes, you'd have two bathrooms here and still have air control in the back. So, but there again, the police, the fire department said they won't allow us to move forward until they have those drawings and that would put it into about the middle to the third week of April. So this move, they can take the time to keep the evidence secured as it needs to be. And then right after they get in and get settled, the chief goes to school and then he comes back and they're looking at a GBI audit they've already been told. So it takes a little bit of the pressure off of the police department as well. Kind of a win-win, so.
We basically ran out of time in order to get things done. And so this is really the, really the solution I see in order to not lose the grant that's off to the letter.
Mayor, now that y'all voted to move the police department, we need a motion to approve the lease, the month-to-month lease for $1,500 a month.
So as Attorney Mitchell said, $1,500 a month, which is a considerable savings for the city. And they've offered a month-to-month lease, give us some time to do it.
I make the motion to approve month-to-month lease for $1,500 a month.
Okay, and second, and all those in favor? Is there any need for, oh, I'm sorry, one more item here. Under cities controlled, concerned. I'm not on a good night. I'm not a great night.
I'm not looking to control anyone.
I was supposed to say, you've really got a good spot here.
Mr. Trump, you're right.
Thank you, City Councilman Mayor, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Kirk Hogan Rider, I live at 1969 Broad Street. I think most of you are familiar with where I live. I have two items on the agenda tonight, both concerning, I guess, items of a neighborhood watch issue and an alert. First, I would like to, if I would, just make one quick comment about your audits, your assessments of the sidewalks, if I could please. While you're doing that, and I think you know I've raised this issue before, could we examine the crosswalks? I guess they should go hand in hand with sidewalks. I think, Mr. Mayor, and I believe the police chief at this point knows my concerns about the crosswalks, particularly the lack of crosswalks going from subway to the Atlanta Highway and from the police department to any department. I think we are desperately in need of crosswalks and an evaluation of the parking situation directly adjacent to the installation of some crosswalks. So while we're doing that assessment of the sidewalks, I would ask if you could do that as well. Secondly, I'd like to say, this hair though, it looks great. Anyways, the first item I wanted to close tonight was getting perhaps a neighborhood watch started in, well, my particular interest is in downtown Statham and Broad Street, but I guess I would suggest for all of the city limits. I've talked briefly with the police chief about perhaps getting something initiated, talked to the mayor about getting something initiated. I guess I'm trying to get this initiated in lieu of some recent thefts that have occurred on Broad Street. Also, we are going to be under, I guess, burgeoning growth in the next few years. So I think something on this order is going to be highly important. At least getting a conduit of communication between the citizens and themselves and the citizens and the city council and the police department so that we have problems, when we have problems with crime, we can, well, we can be alert and we can look out for one another, communicate with our neighbors. And that's something I think that's lacking these days with our cell phones and whatnot. A lot of our neighbors don't even know who lives next door to us. I think trying to get something like that initiated, at least for those of us who show up to the city council meetings that are, you know, involved with the city government, it would be a good idea for us to communicate, you know, what we know about crime, talk to the police chief and, you know, relay any problems, issues, concerns, et cetera. So I guess I would, I'm throwing that ball out there to try to get a neighborhood watch of sorts initiated. And I would help to serve on the committee for that. I just want to make the city council, you know, aware of that. So I guess I would ask any other citizens in living in any other areas. And I guess at some point, we probably need to sit down and start talking about what it's going to take to get a crime watch or a neighborhood watch initiated in at least the downtown area and then try to get some of the people in the outlying neighborhoods involved as well so that we can just get that ball rolling. And again, that's, it's, my concern is we are going to have a lot more traffic that's going to be a concern. It's not necessarily a crime issue, but that's something I think that perhaps people involved with the neighborhood watch should also be involved with as far as, you know, working with the city, working with the police department to try to, well, I guess it is a crime issue for speeding involved and going through stop signs and whatnot, which I know the police department's been working diligently to try to, try to get a handle on.
Are we, I believe, don't we have a community newsletter that that possibly, if people in their neighborhoods would be interested in forming more, you know, other than just down to here, don't we have a community newsletter that we can go out in?
We also have, I think the city has a column on Facebook as well. And we can send out everything through the local deals and different other ways.
Yeah, right.
Yes, we do some of that.
Yeah.
We also have the, you know, the new neighborhoods have homeowners associations and there's usually the president or vice president who can reach out to them and they're already established. So, you know, that's, that's whole neighborhood.
Right, yeah, exactly. I'm sure that, you know, much like anywhere else, the crime doesn't stay in one location. I mean, if you're having thefts in one location and your next door neighbor, your neighbors in the adjacent neighborhoods don't know about it, they're not going to be as diligent as they might otherwise be if there's communication between those neighborhoods, between the police department, city council, you know, maybe these, I don't know whether these issues necessarily need to be brought up at city council meetings on a routine basis. If the police chief, you know, wants to, you know, let us know where, you know, perhaps regularly at city council meetings, we're having a problem in certain areas and we should need to be more diligent in certain areas. I don't know if that's necessarily important or not, but I just felt it kind of necessary. I guess because of the recent thefts and because of some recent activity that I've had, that's going to be the second emphasis of what I'm posing here tonight. But, you know, any help from the police chief, obviously, and the city council would be greatly appreciated.
I thought I was a solution for what you're asking for. What we can do is something I haven't done, I'm gonna start after we got moved. Each council meeting, when we have a public council meeting, I can come up with that monthly statistics. If we have ongoing investigation on some course, I can't go into the activities because of the ongoing investigation. But I can definitely share with the community on the type of calls that will happen in certain areas. That's something I can put together and do on a month.
We would all, we would all, we would all, we would all.
We can do that.
Yeah, that would be greatly appreciated. Exactly. I know we've had a couple thefts down the street from me, I'm obviously concerned about that. I'm sure my next door neighbors and everyone should be concerned about that. And that would be highly useful information so that we know where, you know, where to be more diligent, when to be more diligent, you know, for people with time, et cetera, if these things are occurring.
We could start a Facebook page dedicated only to crime watch and neighborhood watch, you know, for Statham. You know, there's lots of avenues.
Well, in keeping with that, I guess we can talk more about that. I had just a citizen concern, I've had a, I guess, I've worked with the police chief and Captain Davis on an issue that I had with a gentleman on Broad Street who's apparently, he's a repeat offender for animal cruelty in my estimation. Took liberty to shoot my dog when she got loose several weeks ago. Now, after several thousand dollars worth of vet bills, the dog's doing fine. But Mr. Briscoe lives at 2008 Broad Street. He's not only a repeat offender as far as animal cruelty and shooting dogs is concerned, but he has a violent history as far as using guns before using other methods to solve his disputes. So I don't know whether it's, I felt somewhat compelled to let the citizens know about my experiences with Mr. Briscoe at 2008 Broad Street. And just to warn, number one, warn any pet owners, particularly on Broad Street or on the streets adjacent to Broad Street, that you have someone that's not going to go through the normal channels, whether that be call animal control or call the police department. When a pet enters that property, he's going to use other methods to deter or in this instance, to severely injure my family member. And also, he's, well, he also has, and he was exonerated, but the gentleman has a violent history. You can research it yourself. I'll leave that for your own interpretations. But I felt it necessary to alert people of my experiences here recently, within the past couple of weeks, as far as that's concerned. So, and I also want to thank the current police administration because they were very compassionate with my concerns and my complaint. And I know it's just a dog, but as we know, oftentimes violence towards animals can oftentimes lead towards violent behavior towards humans, which apparently this gentleman has exhibited in the past. But again, I wanted to thank the police chief and Captain Davis for their compassion and for the thorough nature. Again, I know it's just a dog, but they treated me with the utmost respect. And at this point, I've had a very positive experience with the current police administration. with the current police administration. I hope that to continue. So, I want to thank the city council for acting as such and for their diligent pursuit of Mr. Underwood. And I think you made a wise choice at this point. So, I want to leave that to you. He's been, he's been absolutely professional in his department. As far as I'm concerned, it looks like it's moving in a positive direction, so... With that, I guess I'd like to close. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give y'all a quick update? This is, I'm offering y'all a thanks for the citizens of Statham because the reaction on what I brought to the work session, they were out yesterday, cleared the sewer line, okay? And because they cleared that sewer line, when I went home this afternoon, okay, the water was already halfway up the dam. And if they hadn't cleared that out, the deluge that we had coming through there, it would have run over the road today and would've started backwashing the road. So, thank y'all. Thank the administration that sent the people out there to take care of it. We really, the citizens here need to appreciate that because it saved us our tax dollars. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Well, Sam did reach out to, we had, we had to get permission from the owner. And he did reach out to, and then two of the city workers given an update. There's gonna be some other work that has to be done because the beavers, as you know, did a little more damage than we thought. But I thank you for that input.
Yeah, there was two giant piles of logs that were removed out of the, out of the actual drain line.
And the, there was a patch done. When you go across Broad Street onto Atlanta Highway, it's blocked off because I guess the concrete has to cure a little bit, but... How many inches was it?
Twelve.
Twelve inches of concrete in there, so I'm sure people will appreciate it, so... And yes, you had a question?
I have a question for Chief Underwood. You mentioned earlier about the GBI audit and I've been curious what that entails. And I know that this was from Johnson's administration, not yours, but...